Okay, seven oh one, couple meetings in order, take roll, Kyle.
Yeah.
Gavin.
Yep.
Lee. Craig.
Yep.
And Ginger.
Here.
We sent agenda, send motion please, Kyle, twenty second by Craig. Take roll, Kyle.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yep.
Craig.
Yep.
John, you have the floor.
All right, sounds good. Well Terry asked me to come, it doesn't seem like that long ago that I was here visiting with you guys. To switch the plans to me, but just with the end of the year coming, your plan for the city renew is on month one. So the renewal is due by December twentieth to Wellmark if you want to renew on the current plan as is. If you look at page nine of the document, there is a comparison that we did with the plan that you're currently on for this year. The renewal and also two on alternative plan with United Healthcare to give you guys kind of comparison of, you know, what you're looking at for going into next, next year now. With the health insurance world that we're living in right now, there is a ten, ten percent increase from what you're paying this year going into next year for the exact same plan. You know, when we met back then, I believe that was in May, yeah, we talked about putting this plan together with the Aflac and those sorts of things through Kelly, our user. But as you can see, even with the ten percent increase, it's still, even though it's a high number, it's still better off than the alternative of United Healthcare, which would be almost a forty-one and a half percent increase, you know, for the health insurance and that sort of thing, so.
What page, you're on page, oh, yeah, you're on this one here.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yep, so, one, one subtle change with the plan is these numbers are pretty true except for we did add one new, one other family member to the policy, but that, that would only be about two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars, I think, a month to the, to the plan. Then with the prices are shown here in the renewal. So everything else is exactly the same policy as it was last year or currently this year with the deductibles, office visit co-pay, specialist co-pays, emergency room, you know, so everything matches up, obviously it just has that increase, that increase is not only based off the age, because every year as you get older with Wellmark, the rates go up just naturally, but also to the inflation that's built in there as well too, so. And then after those pages, there are some different options, you know, between the PPO plans, HMO plans, HMO POS. Again, you guys have a PPO plan, so you have nationwide coverage for, for your, for the city employees. You know, so it gives us coverage both in the state of Iowa and outside the state of Iowa. With Wellmark, you have that strong network, an HMO, even though it might save you some money, limits your city employees only having coverage here in the state, so if they need to go outside the state like to Rochester Mayo for a service, they would be out of network, would not have coverage on it. An HMO POS would give them coverage with Rochester Mayo out being out of state, but like some of the other specialty clinics outside of state Iowa would not have coverage as well either, so. So that, you know, that could be a cost savings, but then you kind of limit the, limit the network for your employees as well. When we met back then, I believe it was May, when we, we chose this plan, you guys were on a gold plan, which would have been a lot higher priced than this, but we, we paired it up with both that Aflac plan as well as the Delta Dental and the Vision with Kelly from, our user, from the Aflac office in Monticello to help offset the costs for both Aflac plans with these co-pays and out of, out of pocket deductibles with the silver plan that you guys are currently on right now.
What was that plan that you were, when you were here the last time that you said that you weren't sure on the plan or what it was gonna cover? Or that you were recommending or the cities are going with?
That, that the cities are going with?
Yeah, was there a plan that was coming out or?
Um.
A new plan that you were talking about?
Well, the.
I'm drawing a blank on it, is that?
Yeah, the only other option that you can do in the group space is called a, a level funded plan. Where UHC's, this plan with United Healthcare, Wellmark is age banded or the rates are based off of a pool of people, right? The pool of people in Iowa. Level funded is you take the group, they have to, everybody on the plan has to do medical questions and then they base your rate based off the healthiness of the group.
Oh.
So then based off of that, you won't, everything would still be covered, there won't be any waiting periods, but based off of the people's answers to those health questions with the level funded, could save you some money, but then if you have some unhealthy things happen or claims happen, then that rate will go, you know, get driven back up on it, so it's a, and you don't.
Flip of the coin.
Yeah, flip of the coin, yeah, and you, and you don't wanna, I mean, sometimes those low funded work for people, but then you also don't want people, if they're sick, not going, not going to the doctor, to the hospital, because they're worried about, you know, claim and their, their, your costs going up. This, no matter how many claims that you guys have, doesn't affect your rate, because it's, it's age banded, it's, it's based off the, some actuaries down in Des Moines for Wellmark looks at all the rates and decides the, the rates based off of age. And that's how they come up with those, based off what's going on, so. And then you do have some other plans in there, so we do have some time, the, the document just has to be documented before the twentieth of December for it to go into effect for January first, so if you wanted to look at any of the other plans, we could always, you know, cross-reference those, and I can always cross-reference with Kelly as well too, to see if, how her Aflac plans would benefit, you know, the city employees as well too, to make sure there's no loopholes in the coverage.
Thank you, did you have any questions mainly with?
I don't have any questions, I just, because the rate cost went up, I just wanted him here to come and answer any questions that any of you might have.
In the world we're living in today, ten percent, I mean, ten percent seems like a lot, but ten percent, you know, in, in all case scenarios isn't, you know, a lot in the grand scheme of things, so unfortunately, you know, it used to be more two percent, but it seems like, you know.
Right.
I'd like to take a look through this black binder and then at the December meeting, make a final decision.
Mm-hmm.
It seems sensible to look it all over, even though, I mean, this option we already have seems like the most reasonable. One there.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to just roll with it today?
Any problems with it?
No.
Yeah.
Been working good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not really, I had everything done, but thankfully.
My friend would.
Like he was saying about having to go to Rochester, it sure seems like earlier, there's been a lot of people having to go to Rochester to get treatment.
Do you have any other questions for John?
I think it's good.
If you do think of some, just let me know and I can.
You can shoot it my way or whatever, and I can answer that, and then your next meeting is December ninth, okay, so I'll be playing time before.
Yeah. Go for it, Stu.
Yep, so.
That's why I thought we'd start tonight with having you come in.
Yep.
That's always good. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, talk good, thank you guys.
Thank you, John.
Yep. And Craig gave you questions by cards in there, so if you have some more Medicare questions, you call me after the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Rod, you got anything?
Uh, had one of the pumps at the lift station went down a week or two ago, I put the spare one in, it seems to be working all right. And I'll probably get this, the one I took out, take down this supply pump, I have to look at it, give us a quote on what it cost to fix it. And then we also had a blower go down the other day, it was like the compressor part got locked up for some reason. It worked fine when I quit using it and I went to switch them over and it was, it's locked up now for some reason, not only why, but working on getting that price on, get that bill cost to get that fixed too. Just working on the two door.
Who are you going through with that?
Is it Delta? In Cedar Rapids, I don't, other than anybody I know who deals with Kaiser and stuff like that.
J.C. Cross.
J.C. where they have it?
Quad Cities.
Quad Cities.
I'll leave, I'll leave phone number with Terry before I leave tonight, or if I forget, email me tomorrow and I'll send you contact information. They're good to work with.
We, I don't, I don't know if it, if the pricing makes a difference or not, we, luckily most of the stuff we've had, I've done, I can do on my own, but I don't know about this part of it, so.
Well, rebuilding the blower note, that you can't.
No, no, I don't know if they can, if it's something they can fix or if it's just something you swap out, I guess I'll ask that when I call and talk to them.
Usually a lot of them will take, I mean, I know J.C. Cross will take it in, they'll disassemble it, see if it's repairable or not, or if it's just total junk.
All right.
I'll, I'll leave that number.
Other than that, I just got a DNR water inspection tomorrow, which I don't see any issues with that, but other than that, yeah, they're doing pretty good, so.
Did you get them pads port for the batches yet?
Not yet, no, I didn't know if, are they gonna buy new ones for over here then, before I do go in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. If you got a week or so maybe, depending on mother nature.
Yeah, it's getting down to, getting too cold freezing.
I got the, oh, the, gotta get a new light for out here too, I've seen it took a crap for the flat.
Flat?
So I was running from Menards to get that, like, concrete and stuff too, so.
Anything else?
How's that gonna do?
Anything?
There's a, that Grundage House, there's a piece of plywood they took off the front door, because they're gonna padlock it. So you may want to pick that plywood up, it's leaning against the house on the porch.
On the front side of it?
On the side, street side, just sitting against there.
So someone finally take your?
Yes.
Good.
But I guess somebody, they said that the back door was, panel was off it, when he got there, he had to put that back on, so somebody was.
Somebody broke into it.
Yeah, we.
We do that.
We put it on and they'd have it back off in two days.
They broke into it.
It was on there last Friday night, when we was over at Rushwords, and he said, somebody must have been in there Saturday or something.
There was a crowbar, then the crowbar was gone, so they popped him off with the crowbar, then the crowbar was gone the next, or two days later or something, there was a crowbar laying right there in the front, somewhere in the front or the back, and but then the crowbar was gone.
So we, of course, for us to do, we have to have that car come down and clear it before we can board it back.
Just get that piece of plywood out of there before someone takes it.
Can you set the stop sign out Friday night before you leave, because Christmas lights this weekend.
If you remember, shoot me a text or I might forget it. Maybe I'll just set it off tomorrow about saying something.
Whatever.
I remember somebody else telling me the stop sign over here by where Mike Rickles used to live, Allen Haney on the corner. He says it's about to fall over, and I think mine up by my place is about to fall over too.
All right.
Just look at them, I mean, I know Alan said, he said, I think I could go there and lean, lean on it and it'd fall over.
All right, I know we had one or two that, that last wing we had. Put some bolts out, there's a couple of them hanging out.
Alan said he didn't want to just call city, just like, kept forgetting to tell Terry or to tell you or whatever.
No, if they see that, I wish they would, because I don't always know his ass now.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir. The sheriff's report is, was on the table. City clerk!
Um, I got, I think I included that in your packet, it's the city information update. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's information is correct on how it's listed before I submit it, because that's how it goes to the league.
My phone number is different.
Different? What number?
Three one nine four eight zero five eight two four.
Where's that at?
It's in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet? Oh, I just wanted to see it.
It's in my house number as well. It's just four, four, four and five.
Four and five?
Yep.
I'm glad I.
That's this thing?
Craig, yours is three one nine five five one seven two four nine?
Yeah, that fax number, that's just my Lamont.
No, that's.
No, that's here.
That's here.
Oh, okay, all right, no, I was gonna say that ain't my Lamont.
And you're four oh two West Green Street?
Yep.
Ginger, yours looks correct.
Yeah.
And Kyle?
One great.
Okay, okay, so that should be good then, and I can get that submitted. The other thing was, oh, our G Works update, so Brenda and I had a call with them the other day. Because they basically put us on the back burner, because supposedly there was a rate table issue that we were experiencing, so they wanted to get that fixed before we moved any further. So the phone call she got back to me, that we do have the ability to add approvals to time cards as part of payroll. The rate table issue's been fixed, and we, another issue was setting up the forming, formatting of the checks to win the print, because we were under the impression that we had to format how our checks had to print. And Brenda's like, I feel like that would be, like, we sent them all the information, so it sounds like they're gonna work with us on the formatting of the checks. So we're working with them to try and get going on this. So we can get moving forward on it, this has to, our renewals up as well. And the renewal's the same regardless of whether we're on the cloud or simple city, so that didn't, it was gonna cost us the same no matter what. The other thing, I did get the renewal and roster for the True North Companies, that's the the coverage that the site. So I got that to dig buckles to verify, and then I also, did I include the email from John Larson that I got regarding, he is, he recently accepted a new job with Lynn County and will be leaving Holland Hall, so starting this Monday on the tenth, is Josh Belkin and Shane Wicks will be taking over the South State Street Intersection Project for Holland Hall. So going forward, all correspondence will go with them. He spoke with the DOT recently, they anticipate getting both the access modification utility permits approved soon. He thought November eleventh or twelfth was their best guess, and they'd, we've, Steve already signed those. So we don't need any further signatures. As far as the access modification permit goes, we should be getting an automated message from them once it's approved. Says, I believe it will, it'll ask for signatures from a city official, either I'll sign it, Steve will sign it, or Rod can sign it. Once the DOT permit approvals are received, Josh and Shane will coordinate the next steps for the project. At this point, construction will need to occur next spring, and to apologize just for not getting this wrapped up sooner to allow construction this fall. The next steps involve the following, filing of the plan specifications, construction contract form and cost estimate with city council, anticipate doing this at the December council meeting. And this will give the city time, the council time to review things, one last time before it's sent to the contractors for quotes. Send the plans to contractors for quotes and administrator the quote process. We anticipate sending plans to contractors on December tenth, pending city council approval on the ninth. Review quotes received will likely set the quote due date for January seventh of twenty twenty-six. Quotes will be submitted to city hall, Josh or Shane will come to city hall and assist with opening the quotes. Run the quotes by the council on the January thirteenth council meeting and formally award the construction contract to the best option, and then administer the construction contract, coordinate with contractors throughout construction, coordinate of the payment applications from the contractor, provide inspection and assist with construction closing and accepts, acceptance process. Looking at setting a, the completion date in the contract is April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. The contractor will be able to start work at their own discretion as weather allows. They just need to complete all work no later than April thirtieth, so that'll be in the contract and.
That'll be good, then it won't interfere with farming and stuff like that too much.
And then also, I'm going to be getting, I, I had talked to Rod and asked him, just double checking with those guys, like, on how their phone, the cell phone's working, I know Rod said his phone doesn't work with the app, one of the apps that he has to have for the, but he can use it on the tablet. Anyways, I did learn that we have three phone lines that are on a retail plan plus the tablet. He said, the government plans, basically they look the same, they would look the same every month. In a government plan, like, if Rod were to get a new phone, the government plan, it'd be with a free Galaxy, it'd be a free phone. And in order to do that, the three phone lines, the three main phone, cell phones that we have, the there are payoff amounts, the one that Levi has is thirteen twenty, Rod's is forty six sixty-two, and the one that's in the office is twenty-two dollars. So I just, I told him, I have to run that by council, I can't make that decision, whether we want to just pay off those balances and just go, switch to, so that we're all on the government plan?
I think you might as well.
Or how you wanted to do that, so.
Which is the government plan then, cheaper than the original?
He really didn't say the cost, he just said that the bill, it looks the same every month, there's no, like, one month it's this, then it's this. Then I was questioning him too, because it's hard when we get the, when we get the actual invoice, it always says that there's a past due balance, because the bill prints before the payment hits. So it's, so we always wait until payment actually hits our account before we do anything with it.
I'd double check with him when he says it all looks the same, well, yeah, all your texts can look the same, but if the number's different, that's what we're concerned with.
The amount, yeah, and I have a meeting with him again on Friday. So. Yeah.
So how much are we on the hook to switch?
Um, roughly.
Eighty bucks.
Thirteen, yeah, eighty bucks. So, yeah, and I just know that, like I said, Rod said the one app thing that he uses, he's gotta take, he uses to the tablet too, because the, the app don't work on his phone, so. But I can, I can double check the difference between the cost, what we pay now, and what it would be on a government plan. And he said the difference is, is, because now we have, we actually have a rep, where before these three, the phones and stuff were all purchased in-store, and when they do them in-store, they don't do the governments, any of that stuff, so.
Is it US Cellular or what?
Mm-hmm, and that was my, I was, I asked him a ton of questions on that, like, the difference between US Cellular and T-Mobile, because eventually they're gonna become one.
So how many phones, we got three?
We have, well, on the plan, there's four phones and a tablet, one of them is the Cochrans, which they do theirs. But there's the three phones here, there's the one in the office and then the two public.
One's the Cochrans, but they pay for their.
Yeah, yeah, and that one.
Rod Levi, another one that's in here that she texts us on a lot of times.
Yeah, and the Cochrans one is already on the government plan, because that's the one they had to upgrade the phone in order to do a bunch of the apps that they have. So, yeah, I can have him give me a price difference between the two and so, yeah.
Anything else?
I think that is all I have.
Okay, moving along then, discussion on the renewal though. New Costco's shield effective one one twenty-six, another options, I think we're going to table that.
One that don't go up between now and then, if it goes up, then they're gonna fight for certain, we're gonna kick ourselves for not going with it, but.
You think it'll do that in a month?
No, it won't.
No.
Yeah, what are we, what are we gonna change, I guess, I thought we already went with the best plan? Or not, or did we not?
I think that what he just was talking about tonight is the best plan.
Yeah. He's got some best plan.
I'm wondering why we have a whole big packet of information though.
Well, he just tries to give you everything, just like, hey, I mean, tell him his car, here's your forty letters that you pitch or the.
Yeah.
Well, I had asked him to give maybe different options, just in case there was something that might fit better, like, cost wise or.
Well, he was talking about that other one that he explained, but he wasn't, he was unsure of that, the way he talked to us in May.
What's you guys' deductible right now?
Uh, it's individual, I think it's four and eight.
Two and four.
It's four and eight, and if it's out of.
Network?
Yeah, out of network, I think it's, hold on. So.
I don't think it's four, but I.
If it's out of network, it's even sixteen.
Yeah. And I know, and I think there, and the reason too, they had us with the Aflac as well, to do that, like, to offset, was to help, because you're never gonna meet that deductible, unless you have unseen major surgeries in a year.
Or he was talking about to not change the deductible, that's what he recommended back then.
You can meet the deductible real fast.
Huh?
You can meet the deductible real fast.
No, he's recommended not to change it, when we talked about changing it back on that other plan, he was unsure of that other plan the last time we talked about it.
And the deductible, it would just depend on, you know, if you have surgeries or.
It don't take much.
Oh, I know. So do you want to?
You haven't actually listed twice, so.
I, I left it after this, I should.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, we can redo it, I don't talk about, as long as it just, I didn't get one to change, as I said, if it's guaranteed not to, we're gonna prove it next meeting and.
Yeah, we already got the actual thing. So I can add it for next meeting, so to give you time to actually look through that pamphlet he gave you, just in case you see something else. So I'll just.
Okay, let's get to number eight real quick, so we get a motion to table this till next meeting.
I'll second it.
Ginger? Let's read number eight.
Yep.
One and eight are done then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we'll take roll, Kyle, yes, Gavin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, back to number five. Motion to approve amending the ordinance for public hearing requirements, first reading.
I'll second it.
Okay, Kyle and Ginger. Take roll, Kyle, yes, Kevin?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Motion to, to amend the ordinance for the public hearings, waiving the second and third reading.
I'll make motion.
And then Craig? Take roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Number seven. Citizen get ahold of the attorney, and they charged us a hundred and forty bucks according to the contract. Are we gonna pay it, or are we gonna send the individual the bill?
Do we have this issue, I don't see why, I don't see why we, we should have to pay for her asking him questions.
Exactly, that was my opinion, but we decided, we'll let you guys decide.
There, in the, in your packet for this motion, there is that email, because I had contacted Lynch Dallas, I was so nervous to contact them, because I didn't want to be billed again, and, and so, then Cheryl, the secretary, she contacted Doug, and then he emailed me and he asked to let him know how the council wants him to handle it in the future, not to take any calls from the public, take calls, but try to limit.
That's a no-brainer, he's our attorney, whoever calls him, that's who they bill.
And that's.
But I mean, for one thing, he charged him seven tenths of an hour, well, that means he talked to her for thirty-five minutes about what?
So, in my next, the next thought, so do I bill her and send her a copy of the bill? Because what if she doesn't pay it, it's still, like, Lynch Dallas is still billing us.
I don't think that's fair, that they can even bill us for that.
Well, the only reason they can't is because they didn't have any guidance to say if a resident calls.
It can't be the first time it's ever happened, but that's a big of a firm.
So.
Lynch House is a big firm.
I know, that's, that's why Wyoming and Iowa cannot be their first possible case of a resident calling.
I'm sure it's not.
He was probably talking about us, never give him guidance, whether to talk to other people.
Yeah.
I make the motion, well, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I make the motion, we don't pay the bill and the resident pays the bill. And let Lynch Dallas know that we're not responsible for every person that calls them.
I'll second that.
Okay, move and second it. Take roll, Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to number nine, a person should approve.
Before we, before we, do we need to let them know what we need to? Before we, that, do we need to let them know what we need to have no, nobody calls without our permission?
She put that in the motion.
Oh, did you, okay.
Yep, she put that in the motion, that they're not to take calls from residents unless the resident is paying for it, so. Okay, number nine, resolution to approve property owner at three seventeen East Green Street, reimbursed from the seven fifty for side walk program, anything else?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and take roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Uh, same thing at one oh eight South State. Craig? Take a second. Kevin? And take roll, Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Uh, resolution to approve fiscal year twenty-six Iowa D O T, uh, pre-construction agreement for primary road projects. So basically, our portion is gonna be eleven thousand dollars.
They're gonna have to do that, they're gonna have to do the one thirty-six, they're gonna have to fix it.
Well, this is, this is to do our approaches to our streets, so make it nice, so.
Will they do them, or do we gotta?
Nope, they, they will take care of it, that'll be done, part of the project, all we have to do is write the D O T the check when it's done, so.
I'm making motion.
Okay, Craig, Ginger, were you the second?
I had a question on.
You have a question?
So it says total ten thousand, what's the four point five inflation, is that by the time?
Probably because of.
By the time it actually happened, yeah. Okay.
That's, that's what they're projecting.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Are you seconding?
I will second that.
Okay. We'll take a roll, Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
All right, resolution to approve, watch and be paid.
I'll make that motion.
Take a second. Kevin? Take roll, Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
And then you have, the last is the fiscal year twenty-five annual examination. And you also have a copy of it, or at least.
And the majority of the findings on that have already been fixed.
Except for the ones that we can't, that are fixed.
Yeah. I think A is the hardest, A is the one that's always on there, because there's only.
Yeah, there's only two here.
And then B, with minutes, I have that fixed, I know what is missing. C, the electronic check retention, um, was the bank statements when they come, it only had the front of the check. And it didn't show the back of the check, like, signed and stuff like that, they need to see both. So I've already talked to the bank and they've got that fixed for me to go forward, so that's good. Um, and D, um, the condition, that is fixed, that Sally helps me fix that. Um, the vendor records was, it had to do with, um, Wyoming Mutual Telephone Company. And it, now Eastern Iowa, doing business as Eastern Iowa Fiber, so that's fixed and understood on both parts. And the certified budget part. I'm working on that for this year, cause that was my hardest part this year.
I think it looks good.
So that was.
They're always gonna find something, that's their job.
Yeah, they're, that's their job.
Which I'm glad, because it's a learning curve for. Like, you don't know if you're missing something, if nobody will set it in.
Have a motion to approve the, Craig, take a second. Kevin? Take a roll, Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
I answer next meeting, I have one, after the meeting next month, we will swear in the individuals that got relocated.
I won't be here. Got back surgery, the fourth, if Dallas, I'll be in any shape to be here.
Okay, you just need to come in before the thirty-first.
Of December, yes.
Of December to get sworn in, if you wanna be here at the meeting.
I doubt it, last time they did it, it was rough.
Okay.
And I'm also gonna possibly be adding for next meeting, I got an email from Mike Weber in regards to, um. He has a plat survey outside of the city limits, but within two miles, that needs city approval, so.
And you got the insurance on there, right?
Yeah, insurance, we got it on there. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
And Kyle was the second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, motion carries.